Good evening, everyone. Today is Wednesday, June 16th, 2021. Let us start the meeting with the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I got a little nervous there. Usually my friend, trustee Fritchie is also on, and I could hear him. I was all alone on there because I think most of you are on mute. Got a little nervous.
Okay.
Okay, we are waiting for, oh, there's trustee Lopez and trustee Fritchie is not, will not be joining us tonight, just so folks know.
Okay, trustee White? I think you're muted, Dana.
Present.
Okay, trustee Lopez?
Here.
Trustee Casada?
Present.
Mayor Levin?
Present.
Okay, we're going to public hearings. The first one is going to be on Local Law 5 of 2021, a local law amending chapter 217 zoning of the Village of Austin in code. I don't know if there's anybody that wants to say something before, or would you just like to call for a public comments?
Mayor, I'll just give a brief overview, so if anyone...
Thank you, Stuart.
These are three public hearings relating to three local laws. What they all have in common is providing additional notice and transparency with regard to certain land use board actions that involve, in the first place, anything before the planning or zoning boards, or anything actually before historic preservation for that matter. The second, which we'll get to, will deal with subdivision of land, and the last will deal with telecommunications. What these local laws all will provide is that in addition to the standard notice that is already in the code, it will provide for basically posting of a sign, or signs, on the, on the property. And those signs, depending upon the size of the property, the size of the project, signs may vary. They will be initially obtained through the planning department, but this will advise people who are driving by or walking by that the particular location is the subject of an application pending, be it before planning, zoning, HPC, or a telecommunications application, which would be before this board. So it provides further information. It also puts the board consistent with many other municipalities, including that of the town of Austin.
Thank you. So we're... I'm sorry. So we are opening this up for public hearing, right?
Yes.
And do we open it up now and then close it immediately, or is there...
If, if, if there is no one mayor to do that, you can, you can, it's been opened and then there's no one to speak, it can, it can be a motion made to close the public hearing.
Jamie, do you see anybody? I don't see anybody.
We are the only ones on the meeting. We don't have any attendees today.
Okay, so stalling a minute or so, but I thought maybe somebody would come on, but okay. Alrighty, I, I think we could probably close it if there's nobody that has come here. We need to vote on that, yeah?
Martha, you can call the motion.
Can I have a motion in a second to close the public meeting?
A move.
Second.
Any comments on the, any comments on the board on these?
No.
Really? Okay. Anybody, I know we've discussed these before. Looking at the gallery, I'm not seeing anyone. So Martha, please.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Okay, moving on to Local Law number six of 2021, a local law amending chapter 233 subdivision of land of the Village of Austin in code. Open for public hearing?
Well, I think same thing.
Same, Mayor. Yes, this is just, this just relates to subdivision.
Okay, again, I'm not seeing anybody here. So can we have a motion to close?
A move.
Second.
Any comments on the, one second, Martha, any comments on the board? I'm looking, I'm seeing none. Martha?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Local Law seven of 2021, a local law amending chapter 246 telecommunications of the Village of Austin in code.
Stuart, again, if I may ask you?
Yes, Mayor, this again is with regard to notification. This deals specifically with telecommunications applications that will come before the village. Sometimes, for example, if it has to be renewed, it goes before the Board of Trustees. And again, this would allow for the placement of signs at locations where there are, where such applications are being made. We do have a number of locations in the village where there are telecommunications towers that are on private property. So this would be a notification to individuals that, that application is pending.
Great. Do I have a motion in a second?
A move.
Second.
Comments from anyone on the board?
No.
Not seeing any. Martha?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed? Okay, I'm moving along to mayors and trustees announcements.
Okay, um, any announcements from my fellow trustees?
Um, I have something, but it's a little bit long. If anybody has something short to go before me.
I'm, I'm okay right now.
Go ahead. We'll have to hear it sooner or later, so might as well start with that.
Well, it's just what I did on my summer trip to the NICOM annual meeting in Tanning School. This is what I did. I went with a couple of folks last week. NICOM is the New York State Conference of Mayors. It's an association for cities and villages of New York, not towns, however. I think there's a separate association for towns. I don't know why. And the NICOM advocates for city and village interests before state government. They write legislation, they hold webinars, they basically help municipal governments make sure they know the rules, do everything right. They're always there if you have questions. For a newbie like me, it was really great. While I've kind of been learning on the job, it was great to just hear some of that. I already knew some stuff. Now, it was a three-day event, so they had seminars on various topics, infrastructure, social media, COVID ethics, police reform. I attended six seminars. A couple were like nuts and bolts stuff, for example, roles and responsibilities of municipal officials. This seemed like a good one for me to go to, and they discussed the open meetings, law meetings, procedures, rules of voting, all that stuff people like me need to know. How to enact local legislation, the types of local legislation, which are laws, ordinances, and resolutions, how to conduct a referenda, which is a vote on a specific topic. Now, interestingly, we don't use the word, Stuart, you can help me here, we don't use the word ordinance anymore. We use local law. In fact, they said, not since 1974 have we called local laws ordinances. So I thought that was interesting because I use it. I'm like, what's the local ordinance for that? But apparently, they're all local laws now. Right, Stuart?
You're correct, trustee White. In fact, on my back shelf, I have the, what was then the Code of Ordinances of the Village of Austin, back from prior to the seventies. But by state law, villages do not pass ordinances. Cities pass ordinances for some strange reason. That's what the state has done. So we just pass our local laws. So, but whatever was an ordinance before that is still on the books is still good law. It's just, we now refer to it as laws, but I tend to mix the nomenclature myself all the time.
Yeah, next time someone says, "I'm gonna look up the noise ordinance," they're really not. They're looking up the local law about noise, right?
That would be correct.
All right, just saying, people. I also went to a seminar called the Administration of a Village Volunteer Fire Department, which was interesting. We had the most fire companies of anybody in the room with, I think, nine. They were quite impressed because it's people from villages and cities all over the state, little teeny tiny ones to White Plains to, so, not New York City, I don't think there's anybody there. They're a special case. So what I thought was interesting with the Village Volunteer Fire Department was that according to state law, village board exercises administrative control over its volunteer fire department, even if the village was incorporated after the volunteer fire department was incorporated. So that's interestingly because the Austin's First Fire Company was formed in 1812, and the village incorporated a year later in 1813. So I don't know why I know that. Now, I went to a couple about Main Street revitalization. You know, I kind of did a 30-minute movie about our situation, and indeed, our situation, that we are a 19th century village forced to adapt to the 21st century, is pretty much the same all over the state. New York State was settled early. We were a manufacturing center. You had these downtowns that were these core areas with all your services and your churches and everything, because everybody walked everywhere. But the car, of course, changed the game, and we're all trying to figure out how to revitalize. So they emphasize the importance of placemaking and the experience, experiential retail. And, you know, he said something interesting. This was the lawyer. He said, "People spend money where they feel good, and does your village make people feel good?" So I thought, well, that's a good, good question. I went to a seminar about distressed vacant and abandoned properties. I won't go into it, but it's a really, really hard problem to deal with, and everybody has it. Finally, not surprisingly, marijuana legalization was the most crowded of the training sessions I attended. People had a lot of questions. An interesting point, you know, everybody's thinking opt-in, opt-out, but an interesting point was that if a village opts in and a town opts out, the town still receives a portion of the village revenue from the legal sale of cannabis products. However, if the opposite is true, and a town opts in while a village opts out, the village receives no revenue from town sales of cannabis. So I think that was an interesting kind of unfair part. So there was a lot to talk about afterwards. Everybody rushed the lawyer who had, with more questions. And, but, you know, I talked to everybody there was very open-minded, and people I talked to later were pretty much leaning toward opting in. They were open-minded. Let's just put it that way. So anyway, that was the coolest part, is like hearing what other municipalities do and how their, what their problems and opportunities are versus ours. And they're pretty much the same, just on different scales. So it was really interesting, and I'm really glad I went.
Thank you, Dana. I, you and I spoke after this. I'm always fascinated, and our village manager as well, and I think every year, our village manager, whoever they are, goes. It's super informative. They also help us throughout the year with all sorts of issues, from ethics to law, to ideas, to legislation, to lobbying that's going on. It's really fascinating because my takeaway that I've been to is always the same. It is a big state. New York State is a really big state, and it has the largest city in the United States, and tiny little towns, and everything in between. And I think Dana hit it spot on. I mean, they're different, and yet there are some similarities with it. So I'm, I'm really excited that you were able to go. I think village manager, and did Sue Donnelly also go? Is that? Okay, thank you, Dana. Who else might want to say? But I, I did, I wanted to say this earlier. The most important thing in my mind is always, happy, good, wonderful news. Congratulations to you and your wife, trustee Lopez, Eliza's younger sister, born on Saturday. I, I saw the picture with you and the baby. The babies, to be honest, being a parent myself, sort of are always cute, and they look the same when they first are born. But the smile on your face, man, that was, that was a smile. So congratulations to you and your wife.
Thank you.
And, and glad to have a new member of the Austin community. I was gonna say I'm hoping for future mayor, but she could be future president. Why should I aim so low, right? I should aim high.
That's right.
Exactly right. Let's aim high. That's, that's the goal. So that, that was a little PSA. Let's, I'm gonna go back to trustee announcements. Congratulations, though. Anybody for announcements? Manny, is that a yes and no? I can't tell. Okay. And Omar, announcements for me?
Yeah, so I just, the, the two things are, one, I have a lot of gratitude for my colleagues here because when my second daughter was born on Saturday, folks sent really kind messages and supported this time as I'm on leave from work, and so popping in. And in fact, because we're in this kind of strange newborn time, I'm, I'm gonna be on for a little bit. Then I'm still gonna be on, but off-camera, then I'll be with my daughter, and so my daughter will be, it'll be like this whole very strange thing. But y'all have been so kind and supportive, not only just in general, but also with keeping the work moving because that's what makes our team work together as well as it does, is that when Bob's with the firefighters, we cut, we pick it up when we're doing our thing. Bob picks it up. It's really a team effort. And so that's one big thing. And then two is, we spent a lot of time and energy over the course of the last year and change, talking about COVID and how that has impacted our community and imploing people to, first, I follow the guidelines of maintaining social distance and doing all of that, and then getting tested, and then wearing masks, and then getting vaccinated, and that continues. And now that we are reaching this milestone of 70% of the state getting vaccinated, and so a lot of restrictions that were in place being taken down. Oh, and I mark this occasion by just noting, I certainly can't name all the people that have stepped up during this time, but if you've been paying even a little bit of attention, you've seen the way that folks in our community, both staff here in the village and just community members have stepped up to help one another. And I, that to me has been the silver lining in all of this, economic and health and, and other kinds of challenges, is that the folks in the community have really stepped up to help each other. And so I'm really looking forward to this summer and what it brings, and being able to see folks in person once again. I'm really, really excited about that, and I also recognize that we're entering this place with not all of our members of the community being able to join us for it. And so it's a conflicting feeling, but I'm full of hope and full of gratitude for the community.
Thank you, trustee Lopez. Appreciate it. A couple of things for me. I always like teamwork. So for me, it's always nice to acknowledge, and I appreciate the acknowledgement, that we work as, as a team, and it is a pleasure. I wanted to just, a couple of my announcements is that we have a, I don't think I'm using the right word, but in honor of Juneteenth, and we've sent material about this, I just want to remind the public that we have really, but I think it's gonna be a lovely event on the waterfront from noon till two, could go on to three, in honor of Juneteenth, which is a type of Independence Day for members of our community, our society, and our country that you can learn more about. And by joining us on Saturday for an event, our historian, Joyce Sharrock Cole, is with us today to discuss an update. As the historian is appointed position, she is one of the people organizing this event. I have said this publicly, that I hope it becomes an annual event going forward, and that it really is a phenomenal, I think, education tool, and it is a day celebrated. I don't have the right number, I'm sure, because I've got to write it down, but I'm going to say it's about 40 out of the 50 states, might be 44, have already considered Juneteenth a holiday. New York State last year announced it as a holiday for at least New York State employees. If I got this right, either yesterday or a couple of days ago, it was recently passed by the Senate, going over to the House to make it a national holiday. I look at all these holidays as points of education. That's what it means to me personally. It means different things to different people. And so I think it's a, it's a, it's a really good thing, and I hope you join us all. I looked at the weather report. Fingers crossed that, but I think that we're having, and I do appreciate Joyce, and I call them four fabulous women that have really put this together, but I'm sure there are more people on that that are involved. So that's one of the announcements, and Jamie, please help me out. The time that they are bringing the port of, the, the Idonis coming into Austin with a mobile unit for notary and for passports.
He'll be here starting at 10 o'clock in the morning on Thursday, which is tomorrow, at the Austin Joseph Caputo Community Center.
Great. So for those of you who are beginning to...
Until 1:00, sorry.
I'm sorry.
Until 1:00 PM. I just wanted to make sure that no one shows up late. Yeah.
So notaries are a little easier because most banks have them and all that, although they're becoming tougher and tougher to find people who will notarize for you. So this is a good opportunity. I know we don't have a big audience, but for those of you that are watching and maybe watching in time, please get it out, information. But passports, not so easy right now to get. So this is a great opportunity for people to get passports. So, so pass that word around. You could also meet him. He is one of our elected officials at the county, and I think it's a great opportunity to meet him as well. Lastly, I want to just announce that we are holding a town hall meeting, the fifth Wednesday, Wednesday, June 30th, and we will get more information out to the public. We are doing what I'm gonna call an open mic. Let's see how it works. Let's try something new. This is for anybody that wants to come in front of the board, share thoughts, ideas, questions, conversation. We will be doing it by Zoom. I happen to love Zoom. I think it's a much more accessible way to meet with the public and to share ideas and share presentations than really anything else we've used in a long time. So I plan to keep using Zoom for certain things, not for everything. And that is actually what I have for tonight. I'm sure the village manager will remind me if I have forgotten something of import to announce today, or she'll do it in her announcements. But I think for the next few days, ah, the Juneteenth, I did forget to mention something. Because it's a New York State holiday, and because Juneteenth this year is on Saturday, Friday, village offices are closed. So if you need to get things done, please do so tomorrow, because they will be closed on Friday. That was one of the things I had meant to mention. Okay. You okay there, Karen? I'm about to turn this over to you. I think, actually, I was gonna ask you a question. Special presentation, I think Martha, you're up, because we're done with the mayors and trustee announcements.
Okay, we have a special presentation today from village historian Joyce Sharrock Cole.
Welcome, Joyce.
Thank you. Before I get started, I wanted to thank you, Mayor and trustees, but a big shout out to Jamie Hoffman and Dana White and Sue and Stuart, all the people I bother for the last 11 months when I need something, Rika, everyone that I, when I have a question, everyone's been very good about giving me answers. But Jamie, I think I'm probably one question short of sleeping on your porch. But thank you. So am I able to share my screen, Jamie? Okay. So I will, in the interest of time, try to make this as brief as possible, and when my computer works, right? Okay, there we go. So we're gonna be talking tonight about my first 11 months and what I've been doing. So the first big thing I did, actually, it wasn't the very first, but the Austin COVID Project has been amazing. A partnership with the Austin Public Library. Jamie, I couldn't have done anything without you. She's made the forms, did the website. And actually, Denise Maciver is a former Austin resident that lives in California and is in the Cam Museum. And I saw online that they had a COVID project, so they were instrumental in telling me what worked for them and what didn't. So it was a nice partnership with them when I was starting ours. We went live in 2020. We've gotten submissions of poems, stories, photos. I have all the COVID maps from the county uploaded, state of the declarations of emergency are up. So if someone's gonna research this in a year, 10 years, 15 years, they're gonna see a complete picture of, of how we live life. So I put up here how to get to the form, which is on the village website, the historian page. You can look at the current submissions, including that of Mayor Levin on the lib guide, and the high school students are able to get community service hours for participating in the project, and they have been doing so. So I wanted to learn more about community archiving, so I did go back and took an intensive course in the end of December, it was. So I know more about community archiving because I wanted to know how to preserve our history better. So I did that. I did 19 presentations so far this year, well, yeah, less than a year. You can see them all on the right. Just so people know, and trustee White knows, when you're researching for these presentations, it takes a very long time. So they were done with a lot of care. I was very happy to get into the school district quite a few times. So it has been a very big presentation year. My biggest presentation was Black History Month, an exhibit I did at Bethany Arts Community that I gave tours to state and local elected officials, the Austin School District, the administration, the school board, MBK, with the students of MBK. We did a video where the mayor made a cameo that is being used in the school district. I researched and covered 231 years of history in the village, actually, in the whole, in the village and the town. I conducted oral histories to complete this. There were over 120 visitors to the exhibit, and I did four live oral history Zooms as a part of this exhibit at Bethany. And also, some of the pictures and replication of what I did at Bethany went to the Austin Public Library, and that is actually going up there, putting it up now. This was, this is a horrible picture of me, but this is...
Hello, Austin. Our mayor. I am so excited to be in Bethany Arts Community, learning about Black History Month, learning about the Austin Black community, 1700s all the way to today, beautifully curated by our historian, Sharrock Cole. And I encourage everyone to either come to the Bethany community or see it on social media and at the school. Thank you all. I hope that this is gonna be a great learning experience for all of us.
So I'm not gonna show the whole thing. You can look at the video on the historian website. I just wanted to make Mayor Levin feel bashful about her introduction and her cameo. But it was a very well-received exhibit that a lot of people asked to do again. So what we, we will be doing, the exhibit again at Bethany, but also doing more with the Austin Public Library. So people in the village that can't get to Bethany, they would get the same effect here in the village. That video is on the historian website, their link there, and the Austin School District. I did 12 oral histories this month, I mean, this year, and those interviews went from one to two hours. I had nice, long conversations with current and former Austin residents. This is actually an initiative that I'm gonna keep going. I'm actually pursuing it even more and reaching out to the school district for community service hours to get the children to help with this as well. The Austin School District. On the left, you'll see the programs I have already done with them, and they've asked me to come in and do. And on the right are things I'm scheduled to do. I'm actually scheduled to go before them tomorrow and next week for Juneteenth, and then a workshop for the clerical staff, new teacher orientation in the summer. So I've been spending a lot of time with them, and I'll be doing some workshops over the summer. And the Austin COVID Project is ongoing, so the students are still working with me to do submissions. I know it's harder since the world is open back up and people want to go outside, so I'm reimagining how I want, how I can go about getting people to still submit, because we need to have a record of how we survived. And even our comeback is, would be important to document. I have created a webpage, thank you, Jamie, with the historian, with my information. I can X out the picture, but on the left, you'll see we have former historians, honorary street namings, the COVID project, the forums, previous... honorary street namings, the COVID project, the forums, previous presentations, not just mine, but that of trustee White. And if anything I find from anyone else, everything will go there because this belongs to the community. So I want them to have a place to go, especially children if they need to do a report. So I will be adding more pages with more content coming soon. So in my emails, I have received 71 for the COVID project, including instructions and submissions, community service opportunities, 68 with requests, meeting requests, research requests. I get a lot of people that call me about genealogy. I've had zooms with people that lasted an hour or two, or, and phone calls and historic markers and preservation questions and requests. Village business, I've done two street naming so far, the research, the board appearances, and two street dedications. I think one more is on the horizon. Five research requests, the seal that was last year, Reverend Doors, I had to do something twice, a famous actress, we had to prove if she was here or not. The history, the mayoral history, as you all can read, but the COVID memorial groundbreaking, and I responded to, I think, maybe two foils. I think, yeah, that was it. So my future projects. So the Austining COVID project is ongoing. The community, the OHS community service is ongoing. I want to reimagine ways to involve kids and document in our history. The Rockland Public Library wants me to present there sometime in the fall. I have an exciting partnership with the library coming up with a history project and a display that will be for the office of the historian to display whatever it is that the historian's office wants to exhibit for the community. And I am a history collection project. I have a kickoff of the official oral history project, the project with the Austin Children's Center. They want to start in oral history as well. And community archiving project items handed over in the care of the historian. My husband's going to put me out the house if one more package comes from someone with old pictures that they don't want. This is where to find me on our, on the village website, at the website, or Facebook, or my email. So I made it short. If you have any questions, not to overwhelm people, but that has been my first 11 months as village historian.
Well, that was terrific. So I, I'm tired just hearing it, and I have to remind myself that you work full time. In addition to doing this, which is an appointed position, it almost feels like you're part of the staff, but you're not. You're actually. And I just want to add for people hearing this is that, in addition to all the amazing work that Joyce does, she is the village historian. The town actually also has historian. It's not that we compete. It's just that people often go to her. She does work for Austining. I don't think you differentiate. But I think it's, it's great because the village is just very lucky to have you. I'm very grateful for the work you've done. I think people should feel free to, to ask you as they have for future projects to get a sense of what you're able to do. I actually went online to see what village historians in New York State do in the country, and it's, there's an entire, I guess, federation of them. It's a, it's a position that actually has a lot of gravitas in many communities. I know that you and Dana, when she was historian, worked together. I think the village is very lucky to have Dana White as its historian, and now to have you, Joyce. I only have one question. Out of all of this, what is your favorite part about being historian?
Um, I think sharing what I learned with people, especially when it connects to them personally. I like seeing the look on their face, and that's probably why I like being a genealogist as well. And then my perspective of researching through a genealogist lens makes it very rewarding to me because I always try to give people a buy-in. You're going to care more about history when it relates to you and it affects you. So that's, that's how I try to do it. So I think just how people feel when they find something out that connects to them is what I like best.
Well, I appreciate your service to the community. I don't know if my colleagues have any questions or comments.
Um, I do. I think Joyce is being humble and neglected to list all the boards she's been named to as well.
Good point. Thank you.
Mostly in the Westchester County Historical Society. So that's pretty cool.
Thank you.
So thanks for doing a great job. You know, I feel like we're on our way to having a three-dimensional story of Austining. And you know, black history is American history. And we have to remember that. And the histories intersect. So history is history. So I am thrilled that Joyce is really blazing a trail for us in this, and everybody benefits. So, thanks. Thank you. I want to add one thing. In terms of the Hispanic community, I want to start getting oral history of when they got here. So when their kids are looking five to 10 years, that they're not having a void and not seeing themselves represented. So I want to do that as well. I want everyone to see themselves in history. It's very important that you see yourself represented and you see how you contributed. So I want to start that, but I will need help with that because my Spanish stops at ola. So I need, I need help, but I want to do that. So thank you. I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, I think, I think it's great. We are a diverse community for more than 130 years. When you and I spoke before you became historian, we talked about there's a Portuguese community of 130 plus years, African-American, I always say 130 years, and you corrected me and said, actually, 400 years. There is an Italian community. There is a Jewish community of 100, over 130 years. I'm sure I'm forgetting there is an Asian community. You know, everybody can keep talking about it, but we've been doing it for a very long time, and everybody should see how it all comes together. So can't do it all together, all the time, at every moment, but certainly through the kids, you could certainly start looking at the history, as you just said. It's all good. You know, wherever you start and wherever you finish, it's all good. Just doing it is really what matters and bringing everybody in, and I appreciate that. Is there any other comments? I, I'm looking at the gallery. So I just-
I do.
Hi, Manny.
Thank you. Joyce, it is really amazing, the type of work that you have done with, with everything going on in our world. So during COVID, and you managed to do a lot of the, a lot of the things, a lot to me, like you said, is, to me, is a lot of education. A lot of things that you have, you have created is point of education, not just for one culture, but I think for anybody that is willing and wants to learn and what, what Austin is about. You know, and I'd be excited. I know you and I sort of are working on a project, sort of kind of, maybe, I know, I know you're going to do it. Trust me, I know. Because I'm going to be bugging you a lot more often than now. And but, you know, something that you did say is, is about the Spanish community. I don't remember, I know someone posted something a while back, I want to say over a year going regards to, they wanted to be very, at that point, they wanted to be very specific in who was the first person over in a particular area from Ecuador that came to Austin. And it was interesting to kind of hear some of the feedback in there. And there's a lot of different people from different countries, from the Spanish community, the Latin American community that have come here. And it has evolved. And I believe, I'm not sure, Dana, were you part of that when they did something in the school? I think Marcia and, can't remember. Ah, help me out of here. I can't remember her name, but they did something in Spanish. They were trying to, I'm sorry. Yeah, you were there?
With Dana.
Yeah, thank you. It's a park school, correct. So I think that's, you have a, you have sort of a base. I think you, you sort of had the beginnings of that. I know there's some families that I know that, you know, at least from Ecuador that I'm aware of, that they've been here for a long time. So I think, you know, if anything, that will be, you know, where you want to start. I think there's a couple of the groups of the community that I actually would, would love to help you with this project. And, and I will be more than happy to do anything I can to be part of that as well, if possible. So come in and whatever it is on that one and on the other project as well. So, but no, thank you so much for all the hard work that you have done for Austin. It's really truly a privilege to have you as a historian for us. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? I know we have lots and people are very mindful of time because when we go through the alphabet, the way I'm looking at the agenda, we're all going to go through almost the entire alphabet and resolutions and all sorts of stuff. It's going to be a long evening, but is there anyone else with comments?
I have one quick thing.
Please.
Yeah, thank you, Joyce, for the presentation. I'd say what would be most helpful is as you're learning about all of these different things, if there are, I know certainly we have on the village page on, there is a number of ways that folks can get in touch with you, you can get updates. But if there's anything in particular that you want us to push out, one of the best things that we can do is get the word out there to the community. So please see us as a resource in general, but particular when it comes to getting the word out there. If you're looking for things, or if you have things coming up, anything like that, we want to be that megaphone that is amplifying the message. So please see us as a resource.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Martha, I think we are ready for administrative reports. Thank you, Joyce.
Oh, we just wanted to say, I just wanted to say something really quick too, that thanks to the work that you were doing with genealogy, this kind of pushed the clerk's office to put out finally our genealogy report because we've realized during the, well, all the work that you were doing, we're like, wow, people are really interested in, you know, finding the background of their parents or their grandparents, siblings, cousins. So we've actually even spurred us to put out our genealogy form. So we have that live and, you know, hopefully we're going to, we're going to put it live and it'll be all working. So thank you for your help too as well with that.
I'm excited.
Okay, so administrative reports, village manager Karen DeTroy.
Thank you, Martha. Thank you so much, Joyce. What a fabulous presentation. We, as everybody said, we are also appreciative of your work and Dana's before you and for bringing Austining's history to life. What's more wonderful than that? So thank you so much. I'd like to start by announcing that Kevin Griffith unfortunately is resigning from the ZBA. He had a change of plans in his, in his life and career and will be moving. But we were appointing Kyle Beckley as an alternate. I'm now also pleased to announce that we are going to now appoint Kyle Beckley as a full member of the ZBA to fill Kevin's time. And his term ends to February 2nd, 2022. So we wish Kevin all the best of luck and thank him for his service. And we welcome Kyle to the ZBA. So I did attend the Nikon conference with trustee White and our clerk, Sue Donnelly. It was a very interesting thing. And I know trustee White touched on a lot of the things that the conference brings to us, a great amount of resources to navigate the many different things we have to navigate here in village and city government. We did sort of divide and conquer. There were a lot of very, very interesting, very relevant and very compelling sessions and workshops. So while trustee White looks on some, I would like to just mention that a lot of the conference talked about the American Rescue Plan Act. And that is the federal funding that will be provided directly to communities. I spoke to our, our treasurer. We think we should be hearing about what, what Austin will receive in probably around September. We've done all the work internally that we need to do to make sure that, that we're ready to receive those funding, that funding. The funding is going to be distributed, will be allowed to distribute it in four buckets essentially. So we can use it to respond to public health emergency, to, to the public health emergency of COVID and its negative economic impacts. And that can be in the form of assistance to households and or small businesses and nonprofits, as well as assistance to impacted industries such as tourism. Can also be used to respond to workers performing essential, workers who have been deemed essential workers, and that can be in the form of some different very grants and support and loans. More relevant probably for a community our size though is the provision of government services in an amount not to exceed COVID-related loss. So we'll be calculating what we lost due to COVID. It's a relatively complicated process that involves looking at the past two years prior to COVID and averaging things out. So be working with our auditors to help us do that, to calculate what monies we can use towards, towards offsetting that loss. And we can also use the funding for making this necessary investments to water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. So as you know, we have a water treatment plant that we will be looking to construct starting next year. So hopefully we'll be able to put some of those resources to that as well. So this is a pretty complicated process. And one of the beauties of Nikon is that it can really walk you through the process. And while we got a lot of information, it raised a lot of questions. So there'll be webinars and ability to talk to Nikon officials going forward. So we will have a lot of support as we navigate what, what we now know as the ARPA funding coming through. We also had, the keynote speaker was Clarence Anthony, CEO and Executive Director of National League of Cities. And there's probably the opportunity for more funding coming down through the federal government. And one of the things that he said, and I really want to make sure that our, all our elected officials here, it really made the point that this is our time to advocate to our federal representatives, advocate for the needs of our community, and really make sure our voices are heard. So that we can get the funding that we need to address the consequences of COVID and to move forward confidently in terms of economic development and sustainability going forward. Police reform was another hot topic. We had speakers from small, small cities with very, very non-diverse communities talking about police reform, as well as speakers from places like Albany and Ithaca that had more diverse constituencies. And when they talked about the experiences that they went through, it actually sounded a lot like what we went through. And one of the, one of the elected officials said that in order to really truly move forward on this issue, we need to create an architecture for listening. And that just was such a striking comment because it's true that so much of what we need to do to get to the place where we can have really substantive reform, not, not just in policing, but in any area where reform is needed, is really making sure that we're listening. A lot of the communities went through very similar things where a lot of people wanted to be heard. It was hard for everybody to feel that they were represented, no matter how many community engagement sessions were done, people still felt that they didn't have an opportunity to engage. So an important aspect of anything we do is, is that listening element that's sometimes the hardest part to do. But I thought that term, an architecture, to create an architecture for listening was, was really relevant and apt for virtually everything that we do. Trustee White spoke about marijuana legislation. That was another topic. And we will be meeting, following up with Nikon on something specific to Austining in terms of referenda and how that works in communities that have November elections, because there's a bit of a timing issue there with the new legislation. We'll be conveying more detailed message on all of these items to the Board of Trustees. So I have that information. We'll be making sure you get all the details that you need going forward on these important issues. But I would say it's a valuable experience for any of you who are able to go the next time there's a conference and you can work it into your schedule. I would strongly advise it. It's a great opportunity. So with the lifting of COVID restrictions, which was another topic at Nikon, we talked about broadly. That has impacted what we're doing here in the village too. So as of today, given the governor's announcement yesterday, our health screeners will not have, will not be taking temperatures, and they will not ask health screening questions. However, unvaccinated individuals will be responsible for wearing masks in accordance with the federal CDC guidance. And consistent with state implementation of recent CDC guidance, masks are still required for all unvaccinated individuals. Um, so our health screeners will be playing a vital role in ensuring that mask guidance by asking about vaccination status of our employees and members of the publics. That we can make sure that we continue to protect all of us. Um, so that's a, a bit of a change, um, but you will, if you come to any of the municipal buildings, uh, you will be instructed um and asked, um, if you are vaccinated, if you can show proof, um, you do not have to wear a mask. If you can, if you have not been vaccinated, you will be required to wear a mask. Um. We are also very busy this year of the season rather. The season is grant season. So we are going to be talking about the community development block grants that we're doing as well as many of the nonprofits in our community tonight. So those will be, uh, those are ready for submission and we're going to be able to submit ours this week a bit early, which we're very happy about. And immediately after that, we will start working on the um consolidated funding grant applications as well. So we've just started that process and we'll be updating you as to the grants that we think that are most um viable and well suited um for um success here in the village. So we will keep you posted on that. And that is my announcement for tonight.
Thank you. Oh, there you go, Martha.
Martha, sorry, mayor, if I may just say one quick thing. Um, I'm not sure if anybody's aware, um, but I do want to say thank you to Karen. We actually last week, she celebrated two years of being our village manager. So I want to say thank you for all the hard work that you have done. Uh, I do appreciate that. I know um, is that we have our, all our ups and downs and I, I know especially last year. And and that was an excellent job between you and everybody on the second floor, anybody actually in the village. Uh, everybody in the village, police department, fire department, uh, building department, planning department, that you know, treasurer's office, community center, everybody, sanitation, everybody know, and and village hall that works for Austin and did an excellent job. So thank you for, for your leadership on that. So I appreciate that.
Thank you very much. It's, it's been a pleasure to serve these past few years. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Corporation Council, Stuart Khan.
Thank you. Sorry, excuse me, Stuart. I'm sorry. I can't click fast enough. Sorry, I'm on two screens. I just wanted to add my thanks on behalf of everybody on the board and um, the staff. I mean, the atmosphere, things just feel especially with the pandemic that um, we're just getting so much done and it doesn't get done by itself. So appreciate um, to celebrate your anniversary.
Thank you. We have an amazing team and it has truly been my pleasure. So I appreciate that.
Right. Sorry for the interruption, Stuart.
Thank you, mayor. Good evening, members of the board. Uh, as the mayor related, we have a very long agenda. We go up to resolution S tonight. Uh, I previously apologized to Martha because I hope she has lozenges and water. Uh, but let me just go through some of these quickly so some of you folks can know. Uh, we, there is a resolution to uh extend the preferred developer status for the Wilder Walter Partners relating to 30 Water Street. That would be until February 28th of 2022. Uh, and then there are, after a few others, there are a series of eight resolutions that relate to the villages' applications for CDBG grant funding. The first four resolutions uh deal with the determination of consistency with the villages' local waterfront revitalization program as well as a determination that there are no significant adverse environmental impacts resulting from the four specific projects. The next four resolutions authorize the board of trustees to file the uh applications uh with the county for the CDBG grant funding. Uh, unfortunately, there have to be separate resolutions for each project. And each resolution needs to be read so that it is uh there. So much of this will sound repetitious because it is, but that's just what we're doing. So we're, we're putting those, those four in. Uh, and so those will be before you tonight. Uh, and then we also have a, a resolution to award the DPWs. Uh, as Matty pointed out more correctly, uh, biannual, not annual bidding process for a lot of the services and supplies that the DPW uh, uh, needs with regard to its. It also deals with some stuff that is done obviously by the recreation department for services and that will come up later. Uh, we had two resolutions uh for donations of equipment to our rec department. One, a table tennis table and one, a four drawer file cabinet. And uh, the names of those individuals are in the resolutions with the thanks from the village. And last is a, is a renewal of our agreement with Westchester County for prisoner transportation. Uh, that agreement will run, would start on January 1st and will run through December 31st of 2022. So uh, a lot of resolutions, but uh all for good purposes. So thank you all, folks.
Okay, um, police chief Kevin Sylvester.
Good evening. Just a few quick things from me tonight. Uh, Stuart mentioned there is a very long agenda still. Uh, last week we had uh Books and Badges, our youth literary literacy project together with Austin School District. Where Officer Herschewitz and Farrell had uh Reading in the Park. That's one of a series of events they're going to be hosting on that topic. It's not a new thing we've done, but something that we haven't been able to do in a while because of pandemic stuff. So um, good to get back to in-person programming. We also did a Know Your Right seminar with ENU that's um Jermaine Smith's organization at Star Bethlehem where we were able to um, have discussions with some of the youth in the community about things like car stops and interacting with police officers. And lastly, next Friday, um, Prepare for Traffic, we will be helping the Austin High School conduct their senior car parade. Hopefully this is the last year that we are tasked with driving people around the village and honking loudly. Uh, but the senior class that graduates this weekend will have their um moment in the sun since they can't have the big graduation that other people have had. We'll escort them around, starts noon time Friday, the 25th and is slated to end at two, which means it ends about four. So um, the good news is they'll have their moment. The bad news is that cancels our ice cream truck for Friday because that is the last day of school. So maybe we'll be able to do that some other time, but um, good news is that in-person programming is back and we're looking forward to more community outreach stuff throughout the summer. Thanks.
Okay, is there anybody here?
Oh, sorry. Again, takes me too long to get on here. Thank you, chief. Appreciate it. How was the ENU event? Um, is it something they're going to do more regularly? Um, I know you guys participated. Very much appreciated. Is it a one-time thing to your knowledge?
I, I don't know if they're doing that event again. They may do something else.
Okay.
We don't tend to do the same event twice in a year. We try to do something a little different next time. So.
Okay.
Things that we're invited to, we tend to attend and the things that, that we're hosting, um, we don't have that particular event on the calendar. But if they host another one, I'm sure that we'll work with them.
Great. Well, thank you for participating. I think, I think that was great. Thank you, Martha.
Okay, is there anybody here who would like to make an organizational announcement? Okay, uh, seeing no one, um, is anybody here would like to make and who would like to comment on any of the resolutions tonight?
Martha?
Mm-hmm.
I think we do have one person that wants to comment.
Oh.
This is Juliana.
Oh.
I think she's just happy to be here. Um, four days old and already at her first BOT meeting. Does it get better than that? This is the way you start life.
She's cute. Okay, uh, moving along to village board resolutions, um, approval of minutes, May 26, 2021. Resolve that the board of trustees of the village of Austin hereby approves the minutes of the May 26, 2021 special meeting as presented. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Any comments? Martha?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, uh, approval of minutes, June 2nd, 2021. Resolve that the board of trustees of the village of Austin hereby approves the minutes of the June 2nd, 2021 regular meeting as presented.
So move.
Second.
Comments? Martha?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approval of minutes, June 9th, 2021. Resolve that the board of trustees of the village of Austin hereby approves the minutes of the June 9th, 2021 special meeting as presented. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Comments? Martha?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approval of voucher detail, June 16th, 2021. Resolve that the board of trustees of the village of Austin hereby approves the voucher detail report dated June 16, 2021 in the amount of three hundred and seventeen dollars, three hundred and seventeen, seven hundred and seventy-one dollars and eighty-six cents.
So move.
Second.
Comments?
I do. Sorry. Okay, no, no, go ahead Dana. I was like gonna say that you were there with me.
We worked on together. This is the voucher, voucher detail that we.
Right, correct.
I did my first voucher detail, thanks to Manny. Quite fascinating. You really see where the money goes, so. We uh, we, we oversee that, right Manny?
Yes, we do. And and just uh, and mayor, just so you know, in Karen, um, we actually will now be approving the vouchers because then I was very upset that um, you know, there was a lot of spending that the past few months. I'm just kidding. Now is a very, very good. Now I appreciate that. We did have some questions and I, and I um, I forgot uh to send that over. But there are minor that, you know, questions, general questions that we had and I will send that over hopefully tonight, if not tomorrow, we can go over that with uh, with um, with doubt over those minor details, just clarifications. Um, but thank you. No, it was very helpful. Thank you uh, Dana for, for, you know, stopping by village hall over the weekend. Um, last minute when I called you, you know, that kind of stuff, but it was very helpful. So I do appreciate you stopping by.
I want my own stamp.
Oh, yes, Maddie, we need, we need a stamp for Dana as well, please.
We'll, we'll get it done. No worries.
Yeah, naturally.
My party will be complete.
Listen, one of the things, the only thing that the five trustees do um towards the end of the year is we're the only ones that can approve budgets. And honestly, to sit through all of those budget portfolios and never having done the vouchers is a different experience. It's not bad or good, but even doing it once, I mean, you really do see the details. And I think it is part of our oversight responsibilities and we have to feel good about the way things are getting done. It's uh not anything more than understanding and following the dollar. And sometimes we might have some different opinions and ideas. I really appreciate you guys going in um and doing at some point in the history of this village, there was a move for trustees to sign off on the details. Um, it sort of continues in a different format now. Our technology has been very helpful. So I appreciate you guys doing that. And I'm glad you found it interesting because people think we're crazy when we talk about vouchers. But it's like a real thing and it's really important and, and, and it's making sure that the public's money is, you know, being watched. I, I, I'm appreciative of your time, guys. Um, okay, Martha?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Extension of preferred developer status of Wilder Balder Partners Incorporated for the former DPW site at 30 Water Street. Whereas board of trustees, a resolution approved on June 17, 2020 authorized the village manager to enter into a letter agreement designating Wilder Balder Partners Incorporated as a preferred developer for the village-owned property bordered by Main Street to the south, Central Avenue to the north, and Water Street to the west. Identified on the tax map of the village of Austin as parcels 89.19 dash six dash 22, 89.19 dash six dash 26, 89.19 dash six dash 27, 89.19 dash six dash 28, and 89.19 dash six dash 29 property. And whereas the first period of exclusivity as a preferred developer for the property ran from June 29th, 2020 until December 26, 2020. And whereas the board of trustees, a resolution approved in December 2nd, 2020, extended the period of exclusivity until June 24, 2021. And whereas the village of Austin Board of Trustees and Wilder Balder Partners Incorporated want to extend the period of inclusivity until February 28, 2022, the facility continued public engagement, due diligence, and action towards the finalization of an acceptable plan for the redevelopment of the property and the drafting and finalization of necessary contract documents. Now therefore be resolved that the period of exclusivity detailed in the June 26, 2020 letter agreement is extended through February 28, 2022. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Second.
Um, we've been discussing aside, this is simply an extension of what already exists, but if there are comments, um. Any? No? Martha?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, resolution acknowledging receipt of application for honorary street renaming and refer to the application to the village historian. Whereas honor about May 4, 2021, the village manager received an application from Kristen Benson seeking the honorary naming of a street or portion thereof in memory of her uncle James Louis Basin Jr. And whereas pursuant to the village of Austin honorary street naming policy, where the application meets basic criteria including A, the proposed honorary street name, B, contribution to the village of Austin by the proposed honorary, C, the length of time the proposed honorary resided or continues to reside in the village, D, the name of the existing street to have the honorary street name, E, whether the street already has an honorary street name, F, a map identifying the location of the street to receive the honorary street name, and G, the proposed honorary's connection to the street with the honorary street naming stop. Now, whereas the application by Kristen Basin meets the basic criteria for honorary street naming. Now therefore be resolved that the application by Kristen Basin is referred to the village historian and accorded the village of Austin's honorary street naming policy. And be it further resolved that the village historian shall present her report to the board of trustees within 45 days of disapproval. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Comments on the board? Martha?
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution authorizing settlement, um, Yuchu Umez Eroni. Whereas Yuchu Umez Eroni, 48 Walden Road, Austin, New York filed a notice of claim against the village of Austin on May 18th, 2021. And whereas, um, Cage in Umez Eroni alleged that he sustained damage to his property on April 17, 2021. And whereas the village's Corporation Council reviewed documents submitted by the claimant and therefore concluded the settlement of this claim was warranted. Now therefore be resolved that the board of trustees of the village of Austin authorizes the settlement of claim for Yuchu Umez Eroni for $31,646.55. And be it further resolved that the treasurer of the village of Austin is hereby authorized and directed to pay, to pay to Yuchu Umez Eroni $31,646.55 in settlement for the aforementioned claim upon delivery to the village of Austin of a general lease for settlement of the claim. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Comments? Martha?
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Uh, opposed? Um, Spring Street Walkability Improvements Phase One, Broad Avenue to Lafayette Avenue. Determination of Consistency with the Village's Local Waterfront Revitalization Program, LWRP, and Determination of Environmental Significance of the Proposed Action Pursuant to State Environmental Quality Review on SEQR. Whereas the Community Development Block Grant CDBG Program, which is administered by the Westchester County Department of Planning, will make funds available to local governments for infrastructure improvements, neighborhood expansion, rehabilitation, housing rehabilitation, code enforcement, economic development loans, public service, and car rehabilitation with the principal purpose of benefiting low and moderate income persons. And whereas, as a member of the Westchester Irving County Consortium, the village of Austin is the series of applying for CDBG funding for the 2022 to 2024 fiscal years. And whereas, the village board of trustees has identified four projects eligible for CDBG funding that will meet the goal of the CDBG program. And whereas, one of the four proposed projects identified by the village board of trustees is the Spring Street Walkability Improvements Phase One, Broad Avenue to Lafayette Avenue project, which involves the installation of new sidewalks curves and ADA compliant ramps on both sides of Spring Street from the intersection with Broad Avenue to Lafayette Avenue. And whereas, by resolution dated May 26, 2021, the village board of trustees determined the following regarding the four proposed projects. One, the board of trustees declared itself as a lead agency for the purpose of the SEQRA review. Two, that the board's preliminary classification was that the four proposed projects were unlisted actions. Three, the short environmental assessment force will be prepared for each project. Four, the coastal assessment force will be prepared for each project. Five, the proposed project could be referred to the village's Environmental Advisory Council for recommendations as to whether the proposed projects were consistent with the LWRP. And six, that the board of trustees as lead agency would make determinations of environmental significance based upon the short environmental assessment forms and SEQR regulation 617.7C. And whereas, the Environmental Advisory Council, EAC, as its June 1st, 2021 meeting, reviewed the coastal assessment form and short environmental assessment form for the Spring Street Walkability Improvements Phase One project and also heard from the village manager about the proposed project. And whereas, on June 9th, 2021, the EAC issued this recommendation to stated in part, it is the EAC's recommendation that proposed action Spring Street Walkability Improvement Sidewalk Replacements. Broad Avenue to Lafayette Avenue is consistent with the village's LWRP policy and standards. The proposed action will improve the conditions along this portion of Spring Street and will complement the area. The project increases the walkability of this heavily traversed street. And whereas pursuant to, to village code section 262 dash F5, the board of trustees shall make the determination of consistency following its next regularly scheduled meeting after receiving the council's recommendations. And whereas the proposed action Spring Street Walkability Improvements Phase One shall be evaluated for consistency in accordance with the LWRP policy standards and conditions. And whereas the board of trustees considered the EAC's recommendations of consistency. And whereas, in accord with the May 26 resolution, a short environmental assessment form is prepared for the project and was concluded that the proposed action Spring Street Walkability Improvements Phase One Would not present any significant negative environmental impact. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Trustees determines that the proposed action. Spring Street Walkability Improvements Phase One, Broad Avenue to Lafayette Avenue is consistent with the village's local waterfront revitalization plan. And be it further resolved that upon consideration of the short environmental assessment form and the responses contained therein, the Board of Trustees as lead agency for the SEQR. Determines that the proposed project Spring Street Walkability Improvements Phase One, Broad Avenue to Lafayette Avenue will not present any significant negative environmental impact. And be further resolved that the Board of Trustees as lead agency issues a negative declaration for the proposed project. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Comments?
Okay, uh, all those in favor? All those in favor?
Hi.
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 Uh, opposed? Uh, i- is trustee Lopez still here?
Yes, I'm still here.
Sorry, okay, I didn't hear you. It was I or opposed.
Oh yeah, yeah, no, my eye is.
Okay, okay. Uh, playground replacement and trail improvements to the old corn aqueduct between North Malcolm Street and Ann Street. Determination of Consistency with the Village's Local Waterfront Revitalization Program, LWRP. And determination environmental significance of the proposed action pursuant to the State Environmental Quality Review Act, SEQR. Whereas the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Program, which is administered by the Westchester County Department of Planning. Will make funds available to local governments for infrastructure improvements, neighborhood expansion, rehabilitation, rehabilitation, housing rehabilitation, code enforcement, economic development loans. Public service and park rehabilitation with the principal purpose of benefiting low and moderate income persons. And whereas, as a member of the Westchester Urban County Consortium of the Village of Austin is desirous for applying for CDBG funding for the twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-four fiscal years. And whereas the Village Board of Trustees has identified four projects eligible for CDBG funding that would meet the goal of CDBG program. And whereas, one of the four proposed products identified by the Village Board of Trustees is a playground replacement and trail improvement to the old corn aqueduct between North Malcolm Street and Ann Street. Which project will replace existing playground equipment as a significant, as the segment of the old corn aqueduct with more inclusive incorporating equipment specifically accessible. And attractive to children of different mobility and sensory abilities. The project will also make trail improvements to the built trail and staircase. As well as tree maintenance and landscaping. And whereas, by resolution dated May twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one, the Village Board of Trustees determined the following regarding the four proposed project. One, the Board of Trustees declared itself as lead agency for the proposed, the purpose of the SEQR review. That the board's preliminary classification was that four proposed projects were unlisted actions. Three, the short environmental assessment forms will be prepared for each project. Four, that coastal assessment forums will be prepared for each project. Five, that the proposed project will refer to the village's Environmental Advisory Council for recommendations as to whether the proposed projects were consistent with LWRP. And six, that the Board of Trustees as lead agency will make determinations of environmental significance based upon the short environmental assessment forms. And SEQR Regulation six hundred seventeen point seven C. And whereas, the Environmental Advisory Council, EAC, at its June first, twenty twenty-one meeting, reviewed the coastal assessment form. In short environmental assessment form for the playground replacement and trail improvements project. And also heard from the village planner about the proposed project. And whereas, on June ninth, twenty twenty-one, the EAC issued its recommendation which stated in part. It is the EAC's recommendation that the proposed action playground replacement and trail improvements project is consistent with the village's LWRP and standards. The proposed action furthers the village's goal to be a walkable village thereby improving quality of life, environmental sustainability. And whereas, pursuant to Village Code Section two hundred and sixty-two dash F five, the Board of Trustees shall make a determination of consistency. Following its next regularly scheduled meeting after receiving the council's recommendation. And whereas, that the proposed action playground replacement and trail improvements to the old corn aqueduct should be evaluated for consistency in accordance with the LWRP policy standards and conditions. And whereas, the Board of Trustees considered the EAC's recommendation of consistency. And whereas, in accord with the May twenty-sixth resolution, a short environmental assessment form was prepared for the project. And it was concluded that the proposed action playground replacement and trail improvements to the old corn aqueduct will do not present any significant negative environmental impacts. And therefore be resolved, the Board of Trustees determines that the proposed action playground replacement and trail improvements to the old corn aqueduct between North Malcolm Street. And Ann Street is consistent with the village's local waterfront revitalization program. And be it further resolved that upon consideration of the short environmental assessment form and the response contained therein, the Board of Trustees as lead agency. For SEQR determines that the proposed project playground replacement and trail improvements to the old corn aqueduct between North Malcolm Street. And Ann Street will not present any significant negative environmental impacts. And be it further resolved, the Board of Trustees as lead agency issues a negative declaration for the proposed project. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Board comments? Anyone? Martha?
All those in favor?
Hi. Hi.
Uh, opposed?
And Martha, if you want a break, I'm happy to read one or two for you.
I'll, I'll, I'll read this one and then maybe I'll let you take over the next one. Okay. Okay, uh, Spring Street Walkability Improvement Phase Two, Lafayette Avenue to entrance of Scarborough Manor. Determination of Consistency with the village's local waterfront revitalization program, LWRP. And determination of environmental significance of the proposed action pursuant to the State Environmental Quality Review Act, SEQR. Whereas the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Program, which is administered by the Westchester County Department of Planning. Will make funds available to local governments for infrastructure improvements, neighborhood expansion and rehabilitation, housing rehabilitation, code enforcement, economic development loans. Public service and park rehabilitation with the principal purpose of benefiting low and moderate income persons. And whereas, as a member of the Westchester Urban County Consortium, the Village of Austin is the series of applying for CDBG funding for the twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-four fiscal years. And whereas, the Village Board of Trustees has identified four projects eligible for CDBG funding that would meet the goal of CDBG program. And whereas, one of the four proposed products identified by the Village Board of Trustees is the Spring Street Walkability Improvements Phase Two. Lafayette Avenue to entrance of Scarborough Manor project, which involves installation of new sidewalk curves and ADA compliant ramps on both sides of Spring Street. From the intersection of Lafayette Avenue to the entrance of Scarborough Manor. This phase of the project includes a small amount of tree work to deal with potentially hazardous trees. And whereas, by resolution dated May twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one, the Village Board of Trustees determined the following regarding the four proposed projects. One, the Board of Trustees declared itself as lead agency for the purpose of the SEQR review. That the board's preliminary classification was that the four proposed projects were unlisted actions. Three, that the short environmental assessment forms will be prepared for each project. Four, the coastal assessment forums will be prepared for each project. Five, that the proposed project will be referred to the village's Environmental Advisory Council for recommendations as to whether the proposed projects were consistent with LWRP. And six, that the Board of Trustees as lead agency would make determination of environmental significance based upon the short environmental assessment forms. And SEQR Regulation six hundred seventeen point seven C. And whereas, the Environmental Advisory Council, EAC, at its June first, twenty twenty-one meeting, reviewed the coastal assessment form. And short environmental assessment for for the Spring Street Walkability Improvement Phase Two project. And also heard from the village planner about the proposed project. And whereas, on June ninth, twenty twenty-one, the EAC issued this recommendation which stated in part. It is the EAC's recommendation that proposed action Spring Street Walkability Improvement Sidewalk Replacements Phase Two. Lafayette Avenue to Scarborough Manor entrance is consistent with the village's LWRP policy and standards. The proposed action will improve the conditions along this portion of Spring Street and will complement the area. The improvements proposed will greatly improve the quality of life for the residents of Austin. And whereas, pursuant to Village Code Section two hundred and sixty-two dash F five, the Board of Trustees shall make a determination of consistency. Following its next regularly scheduled meeting after receiving the council's recommendations. And whereas. So the proposed action Spring Street Walkability Improvements Phase Two shall be evaluated for consistency in accordance with the LWRP policy standards and conditions. And whereas, the Board of Trustees considered the EAC's recommendation for consistency. And whereas, in accord with the May twenty-sixth resolution, a short environmental assessment form was prepared for the project. And it was concluded that proposed action Spring Street Walkability Improvements Phase Two would not present any significant negative environmental impact. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Trustees determines that the proposed action Spring Street Walkability Improvements Phase Two Lafayette Avenue. To the entrance of Scarborough Manor is consistent with the village's local waterfront revitalization plan and be it further resolved. That upon consideration of the short environmental assessment form and the responses contained therein, Board of Trustees as lead agency for SEQR determines. The proposed project Spring Street Walkability Improvements Phase Two Lafayette Avenue to entrance of Scarborough Manor will not present any significant negative environmental impacts. And be it further resolved, the Board of Trustees as lead agency issues a negative declaration for the proposed project. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Comments? Anyone?
Okay, all those in favor?
Hi.
And then I'll, I'll let's do it. Yeah, thank you.
Every once in a while, the author likes to read his own work. Resolution eight, Nelson Sitting Park Playground Replacement, Determination of Consistency with the village's local waterfront revitalization program. And Determination of Environmental Significance of the Proposed Action Pursuant to State Environmental Quality Review Act, SEQR. Whereas the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Program, which is administered by the Westchester County Department of Planning. Will make funds available to local governments for infrastructure improvements, neighborhood expansion and rehabilitation, housing rehabilitation, code enforcement. Economic development loans, public service and park rehabilitation with the principal purpose of benefiting low and moderate income persons. And whereas, as a member of the Westchester County Urban, Westchester Urban County Consortium, the Village of Austin is desirous of applying for CDBG funding. For the twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-four fiscal years. And whereas, the Village Board of Trustees has identified four projects eligible for CDBG funding that would meet the goal of the CDBG program. And whereas, one of the four proposed projects identified by the Village Board of Trustees is the Nelson Sitting Park Playground Replacement Project. Which involves the removal of the existing aging playground equipment and replace it with new inclusive playground equipment. Allowing children of all abilities and developmental stages to play in the same space. And whereas, by resolution dated May twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one, the Village Board of Trustees determined the following regarding the four proposed actions. One, that Board of Trustees declared itself as lead agency for the purpose of the SEQR review. Two, that the board's preliminary classifications was that the four proposed projects were unlisted actions. Three, that short environmental assessment forms will be prepared for each project. Four, that coastal assessment forms will be prepared for each project. Five, that the proposed projects would be referred to the village's Environmental Advisory Council for recommendations as to whether the proposed projects. Were consistent with the LWRP. And six, that the Board of Trustees' lead agency would make determinations of environmental significance. Based upon the short environmental assessment forms and SEQR regula- regulation six one seven point seven C. And whereas, the Environmental Advisory Council, at its June one, twenty twenty-one meeting, reviewed the coastal assessment form and short environmental assessment form. For the Nelson Sitting Park Playground Replacement Project, and also heard from the village planner about the proposed project. And whereas, on June nine, twenty twenty-one, the EAC issued its recommendation which stated in part. Is the EAC's recommendation that the proposed action Nelson Sitting Park Playground Accessibility Replacement Project. Is consistent with the village's LWRP and standards. The proposed action would improve the sitting park, which is one of the largest green spaces in the village. The area is in a densely populated area that is directly across from Park Early Childhood Center, housing pre-K and kindergarten classes. Nelson City Park is used by school students during recess for physical, physical education and class study. And whereas pursuant to Village Code, Section two six two dash five F, the Board of Trustees shall make a determination of consistency. Following its next regularly scheduled meeting after receiving the council's recommendation. And whereas that the proposed action Nelson Sitting Park Playground Replacement shall be evaluated for consistency. In accordance with the LWRP policy standards and conditions. And whereas, the Board of Trustees considered the EAC's recommendation of consistency. And whereas, in accord with the May twenty-sixth resolution, a short environmental assessment form was prepared for the project. And it was concluded that the proposed action Nelson Sitting Park Playground Replacement would not present any significant negative environmental impacts. Now therefore be it resolved, that the Board of Trustees determines that the proposed action Nelson Sitting Park Playground Replacement. Is consistent with the village's local waterfront revitalization plan. And be it further resolved that upon consideration of the short environmental assessment form and the responses contained therein. The Board of Trustees' lead agency, for seeker, determines that proposed action Nelson Sitting Park Playground Replacement. Will not present any significant negative environmental impacts. And be it further resolved that the Board of Trustees as lead agency issues a negative declaration for this proposed project. Do I have a motion?
Some move.
Second.
Comments? My only comment is yay, these are all good things. Um. Martha?
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed? None. Martha, you want me to do the next one? I'm on a roll, let me, I'll just do one more.
Sure, and then, then I'll take over again. Thank you, thank you for the break.
This is uh, Resolution L, Nelson Sitting Park Replacement Project. And folks, these next four resolutions are the ones authorizing the submission of the application for the CDBG. Whereas the Village of Austin is a member of the Westchester Urban County Consortium. And whereas, as a member of the Westchester Urban County Consortium, the Village of Austin is desirous of applying for Community Development Block Grant. Grants for the twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-four fiscal years. And whereas, established by Title One of the Housing and Community Development Act of nineteen seventy-four. The primary goal of CDBG is to develop and strengthen viable urban communities by providing decent housing and suitable living environments. Principally for low and moderate income persons. And whereas, the Village Board of Trustees hosted a special presentation on May nineteen, twenty twenty-one to announce the availability of CDBG grant funding. To identify potential applications. And whereas, the Village Board of Trustees held a public hearing on May twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one. To hear public comments on the village's proposed twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-four CDBG grant projects. And whereas, the Village Board of Trustees has identified four projects eligible for CDBG funding that would meet the goal of the CDBG program. And whereas, one of the four proposed projects identified by the Village Board of Trustees is the Nelson Sitting Park Playground Replacement Project. Which will involve the removal of the existing aging playground equipment and replace it with a new inclusive playground equipment. Allowing children of all abilities and developmental stages to play in the same space, creating a fun environment for many children. So, for many, so that children of all abilities can interact with one another. And whereas, the Village Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the village manager to seek ninety-four thousand dollars in CDBG funding. In order to fund the proposed Nelson Sitting Park Playground Replacement Project specified above. And whereas, for the Nelson Sitting Park Playground Replacement Project, the Village Board of Trustees pledges to match the funding amount requested. With a contribution of ninety-four thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. And whereas, if the proposed Nelson Sitting Park Playground Replacement Project exceeds projected costs, the Village of Austin will be responsible for the balance. And whereas, if any CDBG funding is awarded for the proposed Nelson Sitting Park Playground Replacement Project. The Village of Austin will be responsible for managing the administration of the funds. And whereas, a separate application for CDBG funding is being submitted for the proposed Nelson Sitting Park Replacement Project. Now therefore be it resolved, the Village Board of Trustees endorses this CDBG application. And authorizes the village manager to sign and submit all required application materials. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Comments? Martha, or Stuart, excuse me?
In favor?
Hi.
Hi, sorry.
Any opposed? Nope. Martha, I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you, Stuart. Uh, playground replacement and trail improvements to the old corn aqueducts between North Malcolm Street and Ann Street. Whereas the Village of Austin is a member of the Westchester Urban County Consortium. And whereas, as a member of the Westchester Urban County Consortium. The Village of Austin is the series of applying for Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, for the twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-four fiscal years. And whereas, established by Title One of the Housing and Community Development Act of nineteen, of nineteen seventy-four. The primary goal of CDBG is to develop and strengthen viable urban communities by providing decent housing and suitable living environments principally for low and moderate income persons. And whereas, the Village Board of Trustees hosted a special presentation on May nineteenth, twenty twenty-one to announce the availability of CDBG grant funding. To identify potential applications. And whereas, the Village Board of Trustees held a public hearing on May twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one. To hear public comments on the village's proposed twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-four CDBG projects. And whereas, the Village Board of Trustees has identified four projects eligible for CDBG funding that would be, that would meet the goal of CDBG program. And whereas, one of the four proposed projects identified by the Village Board of Trustees is a playground replacement and trail improvements to the old corn aqueduct. Between North Malcolm Street and Ann Street, which project will replace existing playground equipment at the segment of the old corn aqueduct with more inclusive. Incorporating equipment specifically accessible and attractive to children of different mobility and sensory abilities. The project will also make trail improvements to the built trail and the staircase as well as tree maintenance and landscaping. And whereas, the goal of the project is to enhance the family friendliness of the segment of the old corn aqueduct, increasing recreation options in the neighborhood. As well as to promote the beauty, utility, and safety of the trail, which is well-used by schoolchildren and adults. And whereas, the Village Board of Trustees has authorized, hereby authorized the village manager to seek fifty-seven thousand dollars in CDBG funding. In order to fund the proposed playground replacement and trail improvements to the old corn aqueduct project specified above. And whereas, for the playground replacement and trail improvements to the old corn aqueduct project, the Village Board of Trustees pledges to match the funding amount requested. With a contribution of fifty-seven thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars. And whereas, the proposed playground replacement and trail improvements to the old corn aqueduct project exceeds projected costs. The Village of Austin will be responsible for the balance. And whereas, if any CDBG funding is awarded for the proposed project replacement and trail improvements. To the old corn aqueduct project, the Village of Austin will be responsible for managing the administration of funds. And whereas, a separate application for CDBG funding is being submitted for the proposed playground replacement and trail improvements to the old corn aqueduct project. Now therefore be resolved, the Village Board of Trustees endorses the CDBG application and authorizes the village manager to sign and submit all required application material. Do I have a motion?
Some move.
Second.
Comments? Comments? Martha?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Spring Street Walkability Improvement Phase One. Whereas, the Village of Austin is a member of the Westchester Urban County Consortium. And whereas, as a member of the Westchester Urban County Consortium, the Village of Austin is desirous of applying for the, for Community Development Block Grant CDBG for the two thousand and two to two thousand and twenty-four fiscal years. And whereas, established by Title One of the Housing and Community Development Act of nineteen seventy-four, the primary goal of CDBG is to develop and strengthen viable urban communities by providing decent housing and suitable living environments principally for low and moderate income persons. And whereas, the Village Board of Trustees hosted a special presentation on May nineteen, twenty-twenty-one to announce the availability of CDBG grant funding to identify potential applications. And whereas, the Village Board of Trustees held a public hearing on May twenty-six, twenty-twenty-one to hear public comments on the village's proposed twenty-two to twenty-two-four CDBG projects. And whereas, the Village Board of Trustees has identified four projects eligible for CDBG funding that would meet the goal, oh, that was, that was, Stuart, um, I'll just demand it to get rid of that double that would. Um, would meet the goal of the CDBG program. And whereas, one of the four proposed projects identified by the Village Board of Trustees is the Spring Street Walkability Improvements Project Phase One, which will involve installation of new sidewalk curves and ADA compliant ramps on both sides of Spring Street from the intersection with Broad Avenue to Lafayette Avenue. And whereas, the goal of the project is to enhance walkability of this well-traveled street, improve access to public transportation and key services and retail establishments. And whereas, the Village Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the village manager to seek two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in CDBG funding in order to fund the proposed Spring Street Walkability Improvement Project Phase One specified above. And whereas, for the Spring Street Walkability Improvements Project Phase One, the Village Board of Trustees pledges to match the funding amount required, amount requested with a contribution of three hundred forty-nine thousand, two hundred dollars. And whereas, if the proposed Spring Street Walkability Improvements Project Phase One exceeds projected costs, the Village of Austin will be responsible for the balance. And whereas, if any CDBG funding is awarded for the proposed Spring Street Walkability Improvements Project Phase One, the Village of Austin will be responsible for managing the administration of funds. And whereas, a separate application for CDBG funding is being submitted for the proposed Spring Street Walkability Improvements Project Phase One. Now therefore be resolved, the Village Board of Trustees endorses the CDBG application and authorizes the village manager to sign and submit all required application materials. Do I have a motion?
So move. Second.
Comments? Martha?
Okay, all in favor as amended?
Aye.
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 Okay, give me a second. Spring Street Walkability Improvements Phase Two. Whereas, the Village of Austin is a member of the Westchester Urban County Consortium. And whereas, as a member of the Westchester Urban County Consortium, the Village of Austin is desirous of applying for CDBG Development Block Grant CDBG for the two thousand and two to two thousand and twenty-four fiscal years. And whereas, established by Title One of the Housing and Community Development Act of nineteen seventy-four, the primary goal of CDBG is to develop and strengthen viable urban communities by providing decent housing and suitable living environments principally for low and moderate income persons. And whereas, the Village Board of Trustees hosted a special presentation on May nineteen, twenty-twenty-one to announce the availability of CDBG grant funding to identify potential applications. And whereas, the Village Board of Trustees held a public hearing on May twenty-six, twenty-twenty-one to hear public comments on the village's proposed twenty-two to twenty-two-four CDBG projects. And whereas, the Village Board of Trustees has identified four products eligible for CDBG funding that would meet the goal of the CDBG program. And whereas, one of the four proposed projects identified by the Village Board of Trustees is the Spring Street Walkability Improvements Project Phase Two, which will improve the installation of new sidewalks, curves, and ADA compliant ramps on both sides of Spring Street from the intersection of Lafayette Avenue to the entrance of Scarborough Manor. This phase of the project includes a small amount of tree work to deal with potentially hazardous trees. And whereas, the goal of the project is to enhance walkability of this well-traveled street, improve access to public transportation and key services and retail establishments. And whereas, the Village Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the village manager to seek two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in CDBG funding in order to fund the proposed Spring Street Walkability Improvements Project Phase Two specified above. And whereas, the Spring Street Walkability Improvements Project Phase Two, the Village Board of Trustees pledges to match the funding amount requested with a contribution of two hundred fifty-eight thousand dollars. And whereas, if the proposed Spring Street Walkability Improvement Project Phase Two exceeds projected costs, the Village of Austin will be responsible for the balance. And whereas, if any CDBG funding is awarded for the proposed Spring Street Walkability Improvements Project Phase Two, the Village of Austin will be responsible for managing the administration of the funds. And whereas, a separate application for CDBG funding is being submitted for the proposed Spring Street Walkability Improvements Project Phase Two. Now therefore be resolved, the Village Board of Trustees endorses the CDBG application and authorizes the village manager to sign and submit all required application materials. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Comments? Martha?
Okay, all those in favor as amended?
Aye.
Um, if I may, I just wanted to shout out everybody who worked on this enormous project. Stuart's effort in particular has been heroic. But in addition, Paul and Bill Garrison and Jaime and, and the team in the manager's office. It really was quite a heavy lift and, you know, I, I think we should all be really proud of what was put together. So, thank you.
Thank you, Maddie, for reminding us. I can agree with you more. Thank you.
Okay. Um, we voted already, right? Okay.
Yes.
Um, DPW bid award materials, supplies, and services for the period of June seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-one through April thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Whereas, New York State law provides a municipality to advertise and award bids for certain materials, supplies, and services as specified during through the use of biannual bid process, which allows for the purchase of such items at a fixed cost of the municipality. And whereas, the Village of Austin has in place a procurement policy which provides for purchase and acquisition of certain materials and services by the village as required by New York State law. And whereas, the Village of Austin has advertised for material supplies and services through the biannual bid process as incorporated in the bid requirements for signed purchase orders for certain work as well as maximum work for them to be undertaken by contractors and maximum project expenditures without preapproval of the village manager or Board of Trustees consistent with New York State law in the Village of Austin procurement policy. And whereas, the Village of Austin advertises bids consistent with New York State law and receive response to such advertisement. Now therefore be resolved, that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Austin hereby awards the bids for material supplies and services in accordance with the attached recommendations from the Department of Public Works, which recommendations are circled and be a further resolved. Are the aforementioned awards for materials, supplies, and services effective June seventeenth, twenty twenty-one through April thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Comments? Oh, we need a second.
Second, yeah.
Second.
Comments? Martha?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution authorizing the superintendent of the Recreation and Parks Department to accept as a donation a butterfly table tennis table with accessories. Result that the superintendent of the Village of Austin Recreation and Parks Department is authorized to accept from Jesse Skals, two hundred and thirty-one Chase Court, Austin, New York, ten-five-six-two, the donation of a butterfly table tennis table with accessories. And it is further resolved that the Village of Austin gratefully acknowledges the donation to the Recreation and Parks Department. Do I have a motion?
So move. Second.
Comments? Martha?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution authorizing the superintendent of the Recreation and Parks Department to accept as a donation a four drawer file cabinet. Result that the superintendent of the Village of Austin Recreation and Parks Department is authorized to accept from Louis Lemon Leo, five Meadowbrook Drive, Austin, New York, ten-five-six-two, the donation of a four drawer file cabinet. And it's further resolved that the Village of Austin gratefully acknowledges the donation to the Recreation and Parks Department. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second, anybody?
Second.
Comments? Except to thank for the donation. Um, it's always nice when people do donate. Martha?
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 In our last resolution for the evening, prisoner transportation agreement with Westchester County Department of Correction resolved that upon review by the Corporation Council, the village manager is authorized to sign the prisoner transportation zone rate agreement with Westchester County through, through the Department of Correction for January first, twenty twenty-one to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. Do I have a motion?
So move. Second.
Comments? Martha?
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, opposed? Okay, is there any continuing business of the board?
Anybody? I see no one.
Okay, is there any new business on the board?
No one, okay.
Okay, is there anybody here who would like to address the board on issues not relating to the agenda but of relevance to the common good of the village?
There's nobody there.
Nobody? Okay.
Nobody here.
Then can I have a motion in a second to adjourn the meeting for?
It's adjourned to executive session for matters of real property and litigation, please.
Okay. Do I have a motion in a second?
So move.
We need a second. Thank you.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much. Um, there's really no one in the audience, but thank you, everybody in the gallery. Um, and we are finished for tonight. We will see you, uh, next Wednesday. Thank you.
Thank you.